Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the city council meeting. It's a fun night, looking forward to being on television for the first time live, and we'll see how it goes. So, tonight, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Sam Rensberry, and the invocation will be given tonight by Ian Rainey. Ian? There you are. Sorry, couldn't see you past that. All right. So, a little bit about Ian. He's the associate pastor at the Regeneration Church of Ocean Beach. Well, thanks for coming out, I appreciate it. He is currently serving in the role of men's ministry leader, and he oversees men's study groups, Bible studies, and facilitates men's outreach programs in the Ocean Beach area. He's been doing this for two years. He has a degree in CMNA Leadership Academy. I'll ask you, when you come up to the microphone, tell me what the CMNA is, because for some reason, it doesn't ring a bell with me. And, so, for the past nine years, he's been involved in with prison ministry. It is a true passion of yours, and it's your opportunity to share the gospel message with those who are incarcerated. I actually have friends who do that, so I understand exactly what you do. So, why don't you come up, and then we'll do the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Let us pray.
Hold on a second, let's make sure the microphone is on. Okay, go ahead, sorry about that.
That's okay. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, let me first say, thank you, on behalf of all those who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor and blessing to serve the people of Santee. In the Bible, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for the mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council of men and women. Heavenly Father in our hearts, we plan our course, but we pray that you establish our steps. I pray that they seek you for advice. Let them make decisions based upon what is true, noble, and right. Lord God in this room today, let your wisdom fall upon them, as they gather for this meeting. Give them clarity, so they can effectively tackle each part of today's agenda. Dear God, we pray for unity in their meeting today. They have come together as a group of united and passionate purpose. Come and help them maintain unity, as they discuss certain matters. We pray for open hearts and minds that will promote and accept better ideas. Help these men and women reveal problem areas, and show them the best solutions that will apply. Point their eyes to every positive outcome, and let these favorable results and developments encourage every heart in this room. Dear God, we seek your honor in everything they do and say. God, a truth enlighten them, as they meet together, so they can each have a clear understanding of the issues they need to discuss. Give them clarity in their purpose for this meeting, and what objectives they should accomplish in this meeting. May these objectives keep them on track, and may they bond them together with a common goal. May these objectives drive each of them to actively participate, rather than just passively listen. May this meeting be productive, and may the desired outcome be achieved. Lord God, I'm asking that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of true needs for the people of Santee, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony, even when there's honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and the joy in their task, as they set city policy. So, we lift up this meeting to you, Lord God. Be in our midst, as they place this meeting in your hands, as they also place their hearts and their minds in your hands, so that you may direct them. We seek you for guidance, instruction, and wisdom, so they can make the right decisions today. It is you who knows all things, and in this, I pray. Amen.
Mr. Rensberry?
Good evening, everybody. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next order of business is to present a proclamation to Santee Lakes for the 60th anniversary, and Mr. Bill Palmering, a board member, are you, did Allen make it, or? Okay, but then you're going to be accepting tonight, on behalf of the Water District. Please come on up. Are we on? Did you hear this?
Yes, sir.
So, Santee proclamation. Whereas, since 1961, 21.9 billion gallons of water, that's billion with a B, has been recycled at Santee Ray Stoyer Water Reclamation Facility, north of Santee Lakes, and has flown through Santee Lakes, which creates a unique recreation area. And whereas, in addition to the recreational benefit, the water recycling project diverts 2 million gallons of partially-treated sewage from entering the Pacific Ocean every day, or 730 million gallons every year. Whereas, after making its way through the lakes, approximately 50% of the water is used at the local golf course, city parks, and schools. And whereas, the result is an increased community water supply, with no burden to taxpayers or ratepayers, while reducing the watershed stream and processing costs. Whereas, Santee Lakes hosts over 760,000 visitors annually, and 190-acre parks around seven lakes that are stocked with sport fish year-round. That's pretty good. And whereas, other amenities include a campground with 300 full hookup sites, seven lakefront, and three floating rental cabins on Lake Seven, seven playgrounds inducing a sprayground, pedalboats, five miles of walking, and biking trails, and more. Now, therefore, I, John Minto, Mayor of the City of Santee, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim, Thursday, June 17, 2021, as Santee Lake's 60th anniversary, in the city of Santee, in honor of 60 years that the lake's recreation preserve has been an exceptional environmental and recreational asset to the Santee and greater East County community. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, I'm honored to be here this evening, on behalf of Padre Dam, the owner and operator of Santee Lakes. 60 years ago, Ray Stoyer came up with the idea of Santee Lakes, and from that date forward, Santee Lakes has been a world-renowned leader in water recycling and recreation. We've continued that for 60 years. We have people coming from all over the world to visit us every year, to see how we do it, to see how we affect the community. And I tell you, it has never been better than it is today. Every day is an improvement. As hard as that may seem to be, things continue to progress very well at Santee Lakes. I look forward to the next 60 years, and I hope that you do as well. Thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to take just a few minutes here. First of all, Chief, how about if you tell us a little bit about this new piece of equipment that we're getting here, we're going to go take a look at?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. The item before you is the presentation of the Office of Emergency Services Fire Engine Assignee Program. Like you said, we do have it outside, if you want to take a break. We do have also a video presentation for you, and I must preface that with, making a video is not my first choice, but we're trying to develop content for the Santee TV, which you may never want to show this video again after you watch it, but who knows?
Are you in it?
I am the star, but luckily, it's only about a minute and a half long.
Well, it's got to be great, then.
You might want to reserve that comment.
Let's show that video, then.
Yes, sir.
Is that you?
Yeah, if I grew about seven inches.
Hello, everybody, my name is John Garland, I'm the fire chief, Santee Fire Department. I'm excited to be here tonight to introduce a partnership between the City of Santee and the Office of Emergency Services, otherwise known as OES. The city recently took delivery of the engine behind me from OES, and in return, we've agreed to staff it and send it to large-scale emergencies when requested. When the engine's not being used for large-scale emergencies, the city will be able to add it to our reserve fleet, and be able to use it as needed when our engines are out for service or down for repair. This partnership between OES and the city further enhances our ability to provide utility, not only to our communities, but to communities around us and communities down the state. Over the past several years, we've had the opportunity to have people come to our backyard and help us out. Specifically, 2003 season fire, we had units from all over the state. As you all know, 2020 was one of the most fires in history. Unfortunately, 2021 looked like a lot more of the same, so please help us and our firefighters, but make your home as safe as possible.
All right, how about if we take just a few minutes? Got to get used to this new system. How about if we take just a few minutes, then, and you can go out and give us a quick tour of the apparatus?
Sounds good, we have a crew out there, ready and waiting.
Let's do it. How about if we take just a few minutes, then, and you can go out and give us a quick tour of the apparatus?
Sounds good, we have a crew out there, ready and waiting.
Well, Chief, thank you very much, that was a lot of fun. Sounds good, then, you did a great job, by the way, in that video, don't anybody fool
Thank you, sir, I'm sure I'll see it a thousand times on Santee TV rerun.
It could be. All right, that's, yeah, exactly. Wait till you see the retirement party we have planned. All right, that takes us to our calendar. Are there any items to be added, deleted, or reordered? And Vice Mayor?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Dustin?
No, sir.
No.
And Ron? Seeing if you're paying attention. And I don't have any. City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
No, sir.
City clerk?
No, sir.
Any speaker slips on this consent calendar?
Not on consent.
Okay, thank you very much. So, that takes us to the consent calendar, which are items number one through seven. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve. A motion by Hall?
Second.
Second by Koval, and please prepare the vote. Please vote. Thank you very much. That takes us to our first section of non-agenda public comment. Do we have any speaker slips?
Yes, sir, we have one speaker, Patrick Batten, and you have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. It's always nice to see friendly and familiar faces. Today, I'm here on behalf of the Action for Spent Fuel Solutions Now Coalition. It's a coalition that was created about three or four months ago, and its sole purpose is to look forward to developing and supporting federal legislation that will take spent nuclear fuel off of the San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station in San Onofre, off of our coastline, and find a permanent repository for that to be located. While the Song's Plant has been under decommissioned since 2013, that process is still ongoing, and that spent nuclear fuel is still currently being held on that facility. So, one of the things that we just have to make sure happens is that spent fuel needs to be removed and be restored to, that land to be restored, back to the Department of the Navy and the United States Marine Corps, for them to use it. The federal government is responsible for that, based upon a 1998 law that says that they will take responsibility for all spent fuel, and develop a national repository for that. They have failed to do that at this point, and that's the purpose of this coalition. Recently, though, there's been some positive remarks that we've been happy to hear, and that comes from the new Energy Secretary, Jennifer Granholm, that she stated during a congressional hearing, that the Department of Energy is committed to a consent-based process to find an interim and permanent repository for the spent fuel. This is the reason why, so far since March, when this was created, that we've had more than 120 members join this coalition, and this includes governments, elected officials, utilities, environmental groups, labor leaders, Native American leaders, business organizations, and residents. And I'm here, basically, to ask for your support and assistance in joining the Action for Spent Fuel Solutions Now. You can find more information on the website, and that is spentfuelsolutionsnow.com, and you can also email me, I think most of you have my contact, if not, we have a official email of info@spentfuelsolutionsnow.com. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item number eight, which is a public hearing and resolution amending the Transnet Local Street Improvement Program of projects for the fiscal year 2020, 2021 through 2024, '25. And you don't look like Melanie, but we'll let you do it anyways, Carl.
I'll step in for Melanie this time. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Staff is before you tonight, with a public hearing and a resolution for city council recommendation, amending the local street improvement program for fiscal years 2021 through 2425. The Sandag Board of Directors approved the release of a draft 22 Sandag Program Budget on March, in March of '21. Included in this draft budget is a proposal to increase administrative expenses from 1% to 2% for Sandag administration. Included in the draft budget is a requirement that results in a slight decrease in the revenue for forecasts that the city will receive. Staff was notified of this amount in April, and is required to amend the local street improvement program to reflect the estimated changes. This is a requirement under the Transnet Extension Ordinance, and each jurisdiction must hold a public hearing when amending project budgets, or when using Transnet LSI funding. Exhibit A of the resolution reflects the changes through fiscal year '25, and I'd like to note that there was a minor amendment from what was published. You should have a slip sheet of a couple minor edits to the LSI funding in the prior years. Staff is recommending that city council conduct and close the public hearing, and adopt the attached resolution amending the Transnet Local Street Improvement Program of projects for fiscal years '21 through '25. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Speaker slips?
No speakers, sir.
Thank you. Council, questions or comments?
Oh, I'll go. Mr. Mayor, I do. Sorry. Request for a speak?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
I'm trying to get used to looking at you.
Yeah, me too, I was like, do I look at you, or look at the screen?
For those of you out there, one of the things that's new for us on the council is that there's a little box there that we have to push if they want to speak. They're not used to pushing it, and I'm not used to reading it, so that's what kind of the inside joke up here is, so, just so, bear with us, and have fun with us.
Carl, can you tell us, in layman's terms, what the reduction, you know, was, I guess, in dollar figures, and how does this affect our capital improvement projects that you have?
It's a very small amount, the dollars are, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, it's about $1,000 a year.
It's actually $3,000 in the first year. Actually, it's the current year that they amended the revenue number for, they took the additional admin expenses in the current year only, they kept the future years the same, so it's a $3,000 reduction. We were aware of it when we put together the capital improvement program. So it's a $3,000 reduction. We were aware of it when we put together the capital improvement program. So in effect, it has no impact on what's in the proposed capital improvement program.
I appreciate that, Tim. Yeah, I mean, $3,000 is very negligible in this whole thing as long as it's not affecting your road paving and maintenance.
No, I mean, it won't affect it, and it's just a requirement of the Extension Ordinance that we have to do an amendment when the funding changes, especially because we would be overspent, which would put us in the red of $3,000, which requires us to then do the amendment and bring it before you.
Thank you for that. Further clarification, Carl?
I'm sure that that happens because Sandag makes their adjustments, and depending on what their Sand, Transnet allows them to do and allows them to give out.
Correct.
It's that trickle-down effect. They didn't have the money they thought they were, so now we don't get the money we thought we were going to get, and so forth and so on. So... Imagine that. I know. Anything else? Okay, great. Then I'll take a...
Motion to move forward.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by Rob and a second by Dustin. Please prepare the vote. Please vote. And when you finish, please lock in your vote. It's another little thing we have to do up here.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Good job. That takes us to Continued Business, item number nine, which is Continued Revenue and Discussion of the Proposed Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal Year 2022 through 2026. And I'm pretty sure that Tim's going to be doing that one, right?
I am going to tee this one up. Yes, I am.
All right.
So I'll be fairly brief. Good evening, Mayor Minto, Council members. This represents the City Council and the public's second opportunity to provide input or comment on the proposed capital improvement program for fiscal years 2022 through 2026. Just pausing for the slide. There we go. Thank you. Okay, briefly, the purpose of the CIP, or the Capital Improvement Program. It serves as a multi-year planning tool for the infrastructure and other capital needs of the city. It assists the City Council with setting priorities for the allocation of limited resources. It does identify unfunded needs, helps to manage workloads, and establishes the appropriated CIP budgets for the first two years. So a quick overview of what's included. Over the next five years, there are 73 projects in total totaling $267-plus million. They are organized into five categories, as you see on the screen. Circulation makes up over 60% of the project dollars that are identified in the capital improvement program. Of that total, only $114.4 million is funded. We do have 43 projects that we anticipate to be fully funded within the five-year period. Unfortunately, that leaves $153 million in unfunded project needs that are identified. The CIP is primarily funded with restricted funding sources. Some of the primary ones are there on the screen on the slide for you. About 90-plus percent of the CIP is funded from restricted revenues that have to be used for very particular purposes. This year, we're pleased to be reflecting an enhanced level of general fund contribution into the capital improvement program. $5.4 million in total for the first two years. There's a variety of projects that are identified for using those general fund dollars. Key, of course, would be the $1 million in contribution towards the city's pavement repair and rehabilitation program, and then a variety of other projects on the screen. And of course, there are more included within the CIP document. So next steps, so this evening, as I mentioned, we'll continue the discussion. All projects will continue to be brought back before the City Council, before any contracts are awarded. And there'll be a third and final opportunity for discussion at the next City Council meeting on June 3rd, when we hope to adopt the capital improvement program. A couple of other comments. The first would be there are a handful of minor edits to the actual CIP document that have been made from the version that you had two weeks ago. They're identified in the written materials, the written agenda materials. Three projects had minor adjustments to the project location maps and the project descriptions. And then there was one minor edit to one of the financial spreadsheets in the front end of the document. The other comment to make is, this was mentioned at the first discussion two weeks ago. There are three projects that have been identified where council members may potentially have conflicts. So you may want to include any comments or discussion on those first. Those will include the Santee Lakes drainage improvements, the San Diego River, riverbed, excuse me, the San Diego River, riverbed corridor plan. And the third project is the Prospect Avenue West Improvements Project. With that, that concludes staff's presentation, and of course, your entire team is here and available for any questions you may have.
No speakers.
Really? Okay. Questions, Counsel? Who wants to go first, any? Let's go ahead.
Okay. Can you hear me? All right, cool. So obviously, there's limited funds and many things that we can't do. So I wanted to share what my priorities are, especially in the first couple of years here. Public safety concerns related to encampments and road and sidewalk safety and repair top my list of priorities. And my expectation with the CIP budget is to have some unique ideas for facility projects that also help mitigate some of the unfunded park projects that became new priorities to us since the last CIP budget. This will require innovative thinking about public-private partnerships because, as I stated before, sometimes it's not about the building, it's about the service. And the model of delivering the service to the people in need is my preferred option. And that drills in, I know we're having a workshop later on, maybe in four months, about the community center. But I just want to share some of my thoughts on the community center because I'm the one that brought it up a couple of meetings ago. I don't, I don't know if we do enough for our senior programs in Santee, and so I was, I've done a lot of research. My wheelhouse is with youth. I've spent a lot of my 20s and 30s working with youth. Many of you know I was the Boys and Girls Club Director of the Santee Branch when it was a trailer at Santana High School. I've coached, I've worked at three or four high schools in different capacities. But, you know, now my focus is with our seniors in the City of Santee, and I want to make sure that we offer social service programs assisting the citizens, especially in the mobile home parks, maybe it's through their community rooms, office spaces, and possibly even home visits. Senior services could include advocacy, counseling, money management, safety planning like CERT, and neighborhood watch programs, which we have very active programs in our community. End-of-life planning, elder abuse workshops, and monthly support discussion groups. And then the other thing that is new and emerging, but with Sharp Hospital here now, I think we could really create a great partnership with them, is health and wellness initiatives, including workshops, lectures, physical fitness classes, evidence-based programs like Tai Chi, health screenings, things that contribute to the seniors' physical and psychological well-being. And in an effort to inform health and wellness programming, I really do believe that a partnership with Sharp Hospital and, you know, our, our community colleges and even our elementary schools or junior highs or high schools. So when I think about what we already have in Santee and some opportunities out there, I look at city-owned properties like Sportsplex USA and YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, our teen center, and our City of Santee building spaces, mobile home park clubhouses, some are as large as 4,000 square feet. Sharp Hospital, again, schools, and vacant commercial space. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dustin?
You know, going over the CIP, I know we put some money into the road paving. I'm going to hammer it again tonight because I don't think it's enough still. Tim highlighted right here, pavement repair and rehabilitation, put a million dollars out of that particular fund. There's other fundings that go in there and within the projects and stuff like that. I think we need to be putting another million dollars in this fiscal year, and we need to have a commitment for up to $2 million out of the general fund going forward to increase our PCI goal. We saw it two weeks ago that our PCI index, our average is... Yeah, Carl, was it 62 or something like that, you know, average? I'm trying to find a good adjective and be nice about the, where we rank in the, in the city scale here. Well, we better beat San Diego on everything we do, Ron, not just the road paving. But I, you know, I think we need another million dollars put towards this fiscal, capital improvement year coming. And I'd like to see $2 million of the general fund, however we make our priorities to do that, so we can increase our PCI goal and we get that up to whatever that number is. Let's pick how we're going to get there in five years. Get a plan together and show us in five years we're going to get to X goal by doing whatever commitment that we, that we put forward here. Like I said, the roads are just a big thing for me, and I just think we need to do even more than what we're doing right now. I do appreciate the effort, especially, Tim, finding all the money you can to put in every pot you can and going. But we got to reach even deeper right now, I think.
One of the questions that I had for you, Tim, is regarding our changing from Eden to Tyler's Minus program, I think it is?
Munis.
I understand a $30,000 a year maintenance, that's pretty average. But in 2024, I believe it is, we're looking at $400,000 cost? And what is that for? Is, I mean, they are, does that completely replace this? A new contract? What is it for? What covers that 400? Because it's...
So, so the movement, the migration to Munis is, even though they're both under the Tyler umbrella, which is a software vendor that provides both applications, the Eden product that we currently operate under that we implemented back in 2012, the, the basic architecture that that platform is built upon is not going to be enhanced by Tyler. They're going to continue to support the product for a number of years, but there's a point where we're going to have to jump off. So their, their next level up, it's the product used by Padre Dam, for example, it's Munis. It's one of the most widely-used financial applications for public agencies, medium-to-larger-sized public agencies like Santee. The $400,000 that you see in the third year of the capital improvement program is an estimate of the cost, and it's, we're working with Tyler to drill down on those costs. But it's really a new system implementation. Even though it's under the Tyler umbrella, it's developed completely under different structures. It's not like it's an upgrade of the existing system. It's a brand-new implementation. So the benefit to doing that, instead of doing an RFP and looking at all the systems that are out there and seeing what else is out there, is Tyler is part of what they call their evergreen program. They migrate you, they allow you, they give you benefits to move when it's time to move on to the higher-level technology. They will do it with no data conversion costs. They will do it with no software licensing costs. You only have to pay for the, for the implementation training. There's a big discount embedded. There's at least a $200,000 discount. And I know that sounds, you know, kind of shocking when we're starting at $400,000. But that's basically the going price for a full system implementation, $600,000 to $700,000. So we could do it...
I think that $200,000 production is actually added into the $400,000 cost. That's how they recover it.
Could very well be.
I don't know. Personally, I think we should go for an RFP. Find, because there could, there's only six cities in the United States that I know of that use them.
They use Tyler Eden?
Yeah.
No, there's like, there's still like over 40 in the state of California alone. I've got the numbers. I don't have them with me, but no, it's widely-used. Absolutely.
Well, it's not that I don't trust you. I just want to make sure that our residents are getting the biggest bang for the buck. And when I talk to other people that are in the industry, they think $400,000 is too much money for that.
So let me, let me say this. So that project was developed as part of the capital improvement program development process. It was the opportunity to start the conversations with Tyler on exactly what it would look like for us to migrate from Eden to Munis. So we haven't done the broader look, and we certainly will make sure that when the time comes, and as you see in the CIP, this is not planned until the third year of the capital improvement program. We want to get the permitting and land management system that's a key priority right now. Get that in place, get that implemented before we take on more than we can take on. So it's, it'll be a few years down the road. We'll make sure we look at all the appropriate options for what makes the most sense, both fiscally and operationally going forward.
Yeah, because my, one of my other concerns is that Munis may be good now. Five years or three years, it may not be as good because we know that every year that something's in use, it has a, there's something else coming out that's going to try and trump it. So just getting upgrades, for instance, today, let's say it's number one. Three years from now, it's not number one, but you have to pay a lot of money for upgrades to get it back to number one? Why don't we just continue to look whatever's number one at the same ti, at that time? You know, this, this is your bailiwick. I'm just raising these questions to make sure that, like I said, we get the best bang for our buck. And, and I just hate putting all my eggs in one basket.
Points are well taken. We'll do exactly that when the time comes.
Great. And did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, when I started at the Water District, I actually ran the utility billing and service system. And we migrated, which I don't recommend, three internal systems at the same time. So we upgraded from Eden to Munis. That's, Human Resources and Finance did that. I did the customer service bill and billing software, which also does the mobile services in the field, like meter reading, that kind of thing. And then we did our, our, was it financial? I think our financial systems. It was a lot to do in, in one year. And I was on the week three jobs, and I knew nothing about water, so it was a lot, lot. But I can tell you the costs, and this is very fair for even what we could paid in 2012. So, and I have been to the industry conferences for these systems because utility billing, billing, or all utility software like this is, you know, it's kind of a niche market. There's not a lot of, you know, there isn't a lot of competition, but the ones that do it are very strong. Munis has a great reputation. They're, they're a very strong system. And yeah, it doesn't hurt to look, but I don't think anybody can compete with them, not even close. But that being said, the benefit of a system like this is it takes away the labor-intensive processes that staff has to do behind the scenes, literally to put out a paycheck, things like that. It really does streamline things and, and make a process that would take three to four days take a few hours.
Okay. Well, I'm very familiar with this type of software. Matter of fact, I remember when we were talking about going to Eden, I wasn't very happy about that either, but it worked out, I guess. It's the truth. I'm the only one who's spoken against it, but...
It was document management, not, that was the other system, document management, sorry.
Okay. So, all right then. And I don't, I don't have any more questions or comments. I just, that was one that just stuck out to me, that nearly a half a million dollars, holy mackerel, that seemed like an awful lot of money. So... All right, we don't have any speaker slips, so what we're going to do is...
Look at your screen and...
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Somebody wants to speak again. Mr. McNellis?
That's Vice Mayor McNellis to you, sir.
Vice Mayor McNellis.
Much like Councilman Trotter here, I've been harping on the roads. It's just been, they're, they're just getting worse and worse. So I wholeheartedly agree with his, his concern and his comments. Whatever we need to do to get those as maybe higher on that priority list, even if it does require us to maneuver some funding around from the general fund, it's, this may be the time, not literally right now, right now, this minute, because cost of materials, you're not necessarily getting. We may not necessarily be getting what the, the biggest bang for the buck, as the mayor was making sure we're always trying to do. And the issues with getting labor to show up at a job right now is significant. So once those things kind of settle out in the coming months to year, this really needs to be something that we are jumping all over. And in order for that to happen, we need to have it on the schedule and on the agenda and budgeted now. So without a doubt, those are, that is the number one thing for me right now in the capital improvement funding is... is getting our roads back, I mean, just our our normal city streets. The streets in front of people's houses are, we have weeds coming up through them. I mean, it's, that's not cool. So, yeah, that's, I'm sure sure staff hears it now. They get it, we've said it enough times, but if you didn't, now you heard.
That would probably come under the part here that says, if necessary, give the staff direction. So that would be find find another million dollars? Piece of cake, right? Ron?
Okay, well, I can find you three point three million dollars right away. North Woodside, my favorite one in the of the bunch. We're going to spend for this interchange at North Woodside that we're fighting Caltrans on a regular basis. You know, my answer is that they want to put in a traffic circle. They can pay for it, frankly. We don't need to waste our money on this, so three point three million dollars would fix a lot of roads rather than put in a traffic signal. And I've been saying, along with the rest of the council here, just fix the roads. You know, I mean, that's all it really comes down to. The mayor said fix the fifty-two, we're saying fix the roads. And that's really what we need to do. And as a lot of you know, Laura and I kind of teamed up a little bit on fixing the brush. We're trying to clean out the the riverbeds, so we need to really keep staying on that. And, you know, Rob's been saying for the whole time I've been here, fix underneath the roads. So he's been talking about that, too. So I think we're going to look a little bit on that, so that's kind of good. As far as the senior centers and and the healthcare needs for the seniors, I know that Gressman Healthcare has grants that we we may or may not be able to apply for, but we could apply for them in a different way, through maybe Spark or something like that, that would, they would be able to pay out possible grants for unmet healthcare needs in the city is the way they present it. So that's something we may want to just, we have, they have a new CEO now, Barry Janz retired. And Kristen is his name, is the new CEO at Gressman Healthcare. And he would, they might be able to help out and get us some kind of money if we get it directly or not to help with some kind of those needs, too. So there's money out there. I'm sure there's money out there with grants. We just have to be a little more aggressive on it. Looks like the infrastructure is going nowhere right now in the government, but it's possible it could turn around a little bit. And we need to be right on top of that, too.
All right then. And then you're going to schedule this for another meeting. Is that going to be on the, I think, the twenty-fourth?
June twenty-third, sir, your next city council meeting is the proposed adoption for the capital improvement budget as well as the operating budget for the next fiscal year.
So we're going to do both of those on the same day, though, right?
That is the current plan, sir, yes.
Well, that takes us, yes, Tim?
So if I may, real quickly, in response to Councilmember Holt's here comments regarding the SR sixty-seven Woodside Avenue project, about ninety percent of the funding for that project is using RTCIP, Regional Transportation Congestion Improvement Funds. Very, very sharp limitations on what we can do with those funds. There are only three major arterials, I believe, in Santee that even qualify for those monies to be spent on. And they have to be used typically for capacity enhancing type of projects. So I think a paving project, we have an issue redirecting those funds into just paving.
Okay, we couldn't use it for like smart lights or anything like that? Well, something we could look at. I don't, you know, again, I just see that and it's gone from like one million to three million to, and so, sorry, I just kind of got, that's my issue one, so I apologize. But thank you for clarifying that.
All right, so that's going to take us to item number ten under new business, which is review of the proposed operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Tim?
Okay, so good evening again. Pleased to be presenting for you the proposed operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year. You're actually going to see some real interface between the conversation we just had and this operating budget. So these go hand in hand, clearly. This evening, I'm going to provide a overview of the proposed operating budget focusing on key revenues, key expenditures that impact not just the upcoming fiscal year, but future budgets beyond that. We'll discuss some other funds, a handful of the funds outside of the general fund. And then we'll close the presentation anyway by looping back and discussing the city council priorities and how they align with the proposed budget, both the operating and the capital improvement program. Just a quick note, I'm going to provide the front part of the presentation. Finance Manager Heather Jennings is going to step in. It's going to come back to me. So we're kind of breaking from recent tradition where your department heads of each come to the mic and present at their own departments. Of course, they're all right here. They're available for any department specific budget or operational questions. We just thought it might be a little more efficient to do it this way. So that's our plan for this evening. Then, just like with the CIP, we'll follow up in two weeks with a an additional budget workshop, at which time we hope to adopt the operating budget for next fiscal year. So the good news here is we're seeing continued growth in property tax and sales tax revenues. They are critical to Santee's bottom line. We have a balanced budget we're presenting for you this evening. The general fund reserve policy continues to be met. We're projecting a reserve balance at the end of the upcoming fiscal year that will total eleven point seven million dollars. Represents about a twenty-three point three percent reserve balance, which then provides a supplemental reserve balance beyond the twenty percent city council stated reserve policy level of one point six six million dollars. Those funds are available for keeping in reserves to provide additional cushion or can be redirected for available one-time uses, such as what we just talked about a few minutes ago. So here's a brief summary of the actual proposed budget for the general fund. Revenues of fifty point two million dollars, operating expenditures just over fifty million dollars, with a operating surplus, if you will, just over a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Some other, there are one-time or unique transfers to other funds. There's the four point six million dollar transfer to the capital improvement program that we see on the other side with the CIP budget. There's a payment envisioned to continue the city council's efforts towards addressing unfunded liabilities. We'll talk about that more in a moment. Utilizing then five point three million dollars of an available fund balance, that's almost seventeen million dollars at the start of the upcoming fiscal year, leaving eleven point seven at the end of the upcoming fiscal year for the proposed budget. Okay, focusing on revenues, fifty point two million dollars total, as I just mentioned. That does represent a two point two million dollar decrease from the current fiscal year revenues. However, I need to point out that the current year includes more than two point nine million dollars in non-recurring revenues. Those revenues include one point one million dollars in Federal CARES Act money. It includes the one point seven five million dollars from Waste Management received on the front end of the new franchise agreement and a few other smaller amounts. So if you control for those, we're actually looking at a seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar increase in the upcoming fiscal year. But I'd also take that one step further because included in the in the revenues are reimbursements for fire strike team, fire responses to fires throughout the state and on federal forest areas, the operation collaboration effort that happened in the current fiscal year in response to COVID, where our fire personnel were deployed to provide vaccination support. So if you put those into the mix as well, the actual increase next year is closer to one point four million dollars. Property tax is our largest general fund revenue source, forty-three percent of the total general fund revenues. It's been been a solid revenue source year after year for the city. We're estimating twenty-one point seven million dollars in the upcoming fiscal year. It's about a seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase from the current year. It's based on the change in assessed valuation primarily. We're expecting a four point two percent increase in assessed valuation in the upcoming year. A little bit lower than what we've seen in recent years. But part of that is, you know, a reduction in the CPI that sets the the two percent adjustment across the board for the upcoming year is only going to be one, just over one percent as opposed to two. So that took one percent off the AV growth for next year right there statewide. One other item that we continue to keep our eyes on in response to COVID and the impacts, in particular on commercial properties, but really all property owners are potentially impacted with the, you know, the struggling economy and the shutdowns over the past year plus. We're keeping an eye on the property tax payment delinquencies. So far, they've only upticked by about a half a percent, which is which is positive. But we're in constant contact with the county and keeping our eye on that to make sure we're ahead of the curve if there are some impacts that start to hit. We want to be prepared sooner rather than later. Sales tax is our second largest general fund revenue source, thirty percent of our general fund revenues. Sixteen million, sixteen million dollars is the estimate for the upcoming fiscal year. We're anticipating or projecting a two point seven percent increase in the upcoming year. We're expecting a higher growth rate than that for our general commercial as as the businesses get back to hopefully normal, get back to pre-pandemic levels, hopefully. There are some offsets there. There's some impacts that we're seeing in the monies that come through the county pool that are kind of eroding some of the other gains we're seeing as businesses are stepping it up. Handful of other general fund revenues to discuss. Franchise fees total three point four million. County service area sixty-nine reimbursements, which are for the paramedic program, three point eight million dollars. Both of those are reflecting about three plus percent increases year over year. Building permit and plan check fees, we're estimating one point two million for the upcoming year, pretty consistent with the level we've seen over the last three to four years. Fire reimbursements, as I mentioned earlier, we're estimating that revenue based on a longer term look back on on averages, so to speak. While there's indications with the dry year that it could be a pretty heavy fire season again. We're not going to project the revenues. If the overtime costs are incurred for deploying strike teams and it's unfortunately hectic, crazy, busy fire season, we'll be back with a budget adjustment. It'll be on both sides of the equation, increasing our reimbursement revenues from the federal and state governments with offsetting costs for overtime and other response costs being increased accordingly. Some positive news regarding recreation facilities and special events. Those revenues are recovering nicely here and as we move out of the, hopefully, the pandemic era. We're looking at about a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase in those revenues. Speaking of federal grants in response to COVID, I mentioned that the current year, we have one point one million dollars in revenue from the CARES Act money that we receive through the county and the state. Looking forward, we've talked briefly at the last meeting about the America Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. Santee is going to receive seven point three million in federal funding through this program. We've received half of it now. The other half comes in twelve months. The eligible uses are on the screen there to support public health responses, to sustain governmental services, to provide economic support to the community, and to fund very specific types of infrastructure. The proposed CIP includes a tentative use of three point eight million dollars of the seven point three for very specific stormwater and broadband primarily projects, which are part of that very narrow list of infrastructure that can be, for which this money can be used. The point to be made is we're planning to be back in front of the city council at your July meeting with some some thoughts regarding a funding plan or an expenditure plan for the use of the entire seven point three million. We'll get the council's input and we will try to formalize a a plan for the use of all that money. General fund expenditures total fifty million dollars. It's about a one point five million dollar increase. Pie chart shows you where the where the dollars are falling. No surprise, public safety, law enforcement, and fire and life safety continue to be about two thirds of the total general fund expenditures. Community services, development services are each ten to eleven percent of the budget. And then we've got some smaller amounts for all of your other departments. I'm going to talk briefly about some of the the key key cost impacts on the budget. We talk about the law enforcement services contract every year. It's a critical contract for the city. The upcoming fiscal year will be the fifth and final year of that contract. Contract totals sixteen point seven million dollars in the upcoming year, represents about a seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase. Do need to make a note that there's a number in the written staff report that is incorrect in regards to the dollar increase in this contract for next year. That's my bad. It was, I didn't pick up the number, I picked up the number from the prior year. But the actual increase, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars from this year to next year in that contract. That does maintain the current staffing levels through that contract, fifty-one sworn, two non-sworn officers. But then then it's time to look down the road beyond the upcoming year. And at this point, we don't don't have any answers for you. Those discussions between the contract cities and the county sheriff department are just getting scheduled at this point in time. Looking over the last five-year contract, the ranges of annual increases ranged from four and a half to six percent. Hopefully, that can give us a guide for what we can expect in the future. Time will tell. Personnel costs make up a sizable portion of the budget. So the proposed budget includes the reinstatement of two recreation coordinator positions in the community services department that returns them to their pre-pandemic staffing levels. Does include beyond that, the addition of three point four full-time equivalent positions, fire inspector in the fire department, a field inspector in development services to support private development, city capital projects, utilities, stormwater, wherever the the inspection needs may be. An administrative support department, excuse me, an administrative secretary position in the HR Risk Management Department, which is currently the only department without such a position in their department. And then taking the part-time mechanic for the fleet, which has been a really challenging position for the fire department to keep filled, and taking it from a part-time to a full-time position. So they've got two bodies in the shop at most time. It's important for, from a safety perspective, for meeting the needs of the shop. The proposed budget also includes the one point five percent salary schedule, excuse me, a salary increase that goes on the salary schedule for both the Santee Firefighters Association personnel, general, and management employees. It includes the one percent off the salary schedule, non-perceivable stipend, again, for for all labor groups, SFFA and the general management employees. What's not on the slide, but just another point to make, the proposed budget, of course, includes the direction provided by the city council, I think it was two meetings ago, with when council compensation was was discussed with the one point five increase for next year and the minor increases in the in the technology and auto allowances. All right, everybody's favorite subject is CalPERS retirement costs. We've been in a period with with escalating CalPERS retirement costs. It's a reaction or the result of a variety of decisions made by the CalPERS board, all from the perspective of shoring up the funded status of the retirement program. The main one was the reduction in the discount rate. We're still in the phase in period for the impacts from that decision. So just want to point that out. Also want to just remind the council that employees that are in the tiers one and tiers two of the CalPERS system are paying a portion of not just, they pay a hundred percent of their share, but also pick up a portion of the city's share of the retirement cost as well. That was put into motion about two years ago. CalPERS costs for the upcoming year expected to total five and a half million dollars. It's about a five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar increase from the current year. One thing on a related note, every four years, the CalPERS board does their asset liability management study, trying to drill down on what the asset mix is that it takes to get the desired rate of return on the planned assets. They do their demographic study updates. That process is going through the works right now. And roughly November of twenty twenty-one, we're expecting to to get the decisions from the CalPERS board. You know, we're hopeful, they're not going to make a reduction in the discount rate. It's going to have a pretty sharp impact down the road, but we'll see where we end up. I just wanted to put that out there and just put it on your radar screen that it's it's coming here the second half of the fiscal year. Any decision they make at that point in time wouldn't be implemented for about a year and a half down the road. There's basically a two-year delay between the preparation of their actuary reports and when the cost impacts hit in the rate and the unfunded liability payments. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Heather so you can hear somebody else talk for a few minutes. And take it away, Heather, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. I will be presenting departmental budgets and highlights along with some of, a handful of the other funds. Just waiting for the slide. Here we go. Not so lucky. City Council budget. So the city council budget is $476,000. Included in this budget is $25,000 for diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. City attorney budget, about $800,000, which also includes amounts to support a variety of special projects and litigation matters. A city manager's budget is about $1.2 million. Within this budget are costs set aside for consulting services to support cannabis business analysis, economic development and marketing efforts, and for Santee TV. The city clerk is at $545,000. Included in that budget is $40,000 for redistricting consulting services. The next budget is human resources and risk management at $1.4 million. Included in that budget is $75,000 for an updated ADA transition plan, along with anticipated increase in liability and property insurance premium costs of approximately $105,000. In the finance department, we're also at $1.4 million with $40,000 included in the budget for a development impact study, development impact fee study. The next department is development services, one of our larger departments. They're at about $5.5 million. $30,000 is allocated to the department to develop guidelines per SB 743 for using vehicle miles traveled for transportation impact analysis. There's additional, there's, excuse me, $400,000 to update the general plan and town center specific plan for the proposed expansion of the arts and entertainment overlay district, and about $51,000 to prepare the safety and environmental justice element in its entirety. $22,000 to expand the current scope of work to complete the programmatic EIR for the housing element update rezoning. They're very busy in that department. And then finally, the budget also includes funding for a part-time, non-benefited code compliance assistant. Community services is also at $5.5 million. They've got money programmed for playground and dog park mulch and for cleaning and maintenance of various stormwater mitigation devices. Law enforcement is at 16.7. Tim touched on this budget. Wanted to point out that the city's contribution towards the school resource officer at West Hills and Santana High School has increased by $40,000 to $1,400. And then fire is at $15.6 million with money set aside for purchases of hydraulic rescue equipment used in vehicle rescues, self-contained breathing apparatus equipment, and the replacement of furniture at both fire stations. The next section of the general fund budget is the category other uses. And you'll see the largest item in this category is the funding for the capital improvement program, which we mentioned before at $4.6 million. There are several projects funded by the general fund in the capital improvement program. Three key projects are $1 million for pavement repair and rehabilitation. There's $860,000 for the softball field at Town Center Community Park, and $370,000 for permitting and land management system. This is just the general fund's portion of that project. That project is about $600,000 in total. Other transfers are transfers to the vehicle replacement fund, workers' compensation reserve fund, and the Highway 52 Coalition Fund. And the last item is the $500,000 program to reduce the city's unfunded CalPERS liability. And speaking of unfunded liabilities, retiree health, otherwise known as OPEB. We actually have some pretty good news on this subject. We've been informed by our actuary that because of the city council authorized supplemental contributions we've made and the interest earned on those contributions, there's no further contributions to the trust required. So that's a big, check the box. Now for the one that's not such great news. So CalPERS, unfunded liability is about $47.2 million at the latest measurement date, which was June 30th, 2019. The city does have various options available for addressing the unfunded liability, which will be discussed at a future meeting. And in the meantime, we are proposing to set aside the $500,000 for that purpose. The $500,000 was on the last slide. So the next component of the budget are the other funds. Other funds are used to account for revenues that are legally restricted for specific purposes. These funds can include, a snapshot of the funds included in this category would be PUG fees, gas tax, CDPG, and the landscape maintenance districts funds. Another type of other funds, sorry, are funds that are designated for a specific purpose, which would be the vehicle acquisition fund, the recruiting fund, and the Highway 52 Coalition Fund. The proposed vehicle replacements in fiscal year 2122 are the paramedic ambulance, PB loader, 12- to 14-yard dump truck, and then various leases through the enterprise fleet management program. Gas tax, the gas tax highway users tax fund, we receive revenue from the state of California. This revenue is restricted for street and road purposes. Projected revenues for 2122 are $1.4 million, and we plan on spending the whole $1.4 million. Some of the key projects in the gas tax budget are landscaping and irrigation rehabilitation of five median segments on Magnolia and two on Quyamaca, and then public safety, traffic devices. The next fund is the gas tax road maintenance and repair account, also known as RMRA or SB1. This revenue is also received from the state and is also restricted for street and road purposes. For fiscal year 202122, projected revenue is $1.1 million. Currently have about $1.7 million in available fund balance. The 2122 RMRA budget includes a transfer of $2.8 million to the CIP fund to fund these various projects below. And the last fund, other fund that we will be presenting on today is the Zone 2 Flood Control District. Revenue is received through a property tax allocation, which is used for activities required by the municipal stormwater permit. Fiscal year 2122, the projected revenue is about $431,000 with approximately $88,000 available in fund balance. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2122 is $517,000. Within that budget is $40,000 for, it's an actual increase to the regular consulting services support for the city's stormwater efforts. And with that, I will toss it back to Tim.
Okay, I'm just going to take a couple of minutes and discuss the council priorities that were established by the city council back in March at the special workshop that was held, and just kind of point out the alignment with those priorities and the proposed operating and CIP budgets. Reducing the CalPERS and OPEB unfunded liabilities, we've talked about that just a minute ago. Half million dollars is identified. We'll be back here in a few months with a discussion on the council's thoughts and preferred approach on attacking that large unfunded liability. The acquisition and implementation of a permitting system, there's a $340,000 additional general fund contribution planned in the budget, brings the total project to $600,000 in total, which includes $160,000 in the state SB2 grant. So it's not all funded by the general fund. We've got some state money kicking in there as well. Developing a river bottom safety plan. So the budgets in front of you include a $325,000 general fund contribution. It identifies a $650,000 total project cost. The good news is Director Bill Mertz has reported that the staff at the San Diego River Conservancy, thank you, has recommended a $500,000 grant to Santee for this specific purpose. So positive news for sure. Another priority was increasing the focus of services and safety for those experiencing homelessness. That aligns very clearly with the goals of the federal American Rescue Plan Act monies. So when we bring that plan forward in July, you'll see some recommended allocations there. Completing a DIF and cost allocation plan user fee study. The finance department's got $40,000 proposed in the upcoming year for the DIF study. The plan would be then to take on the user fee study in the following year. Improving city infrastructure and roads. We've talked about that this evening. $4.2 million in funding is identified in the first year of the CIP, including the $1 million from the general fund. There's $2.2 million in federal ARPA money identified to be used for stormwater and drainage-related projects. A couple of other items here involve discussion points from the last city council meeting, looking at options for how we prioritize and schedule road repairs. That will be coming back to the city council here later this year for additional discussion in conjunction with the pavement condition report update that's done every five years. And then reviewing the building inspection services. Again, a report will be coming back to the council within four months. Reviewing alternatives to replace Fire Station 4. The capital improvement program includes $100,000 in general funds to undertake standards of coverage, site location, and various planning costs. The downside is the bulk of that project, really the cost of the actual fire station itself, is currently unfunded. Focusing efforts on economic development opportunities. We've got the $50,000 included in the city manager's budget for city marketing and promotional efforts, and the $400,000 that's included in the proposed development services budget for the arts and entertainment district overlay, again, point towards or provide benefit for the city's economic development efforts. Considering economic development and regulatory options for cannabis, we talked about that. There's monies in the city manager budget for the consultant support to support the city's review and analysis in determining whether to allow cannabis businesses to operate in the city of Santee. So with that, that concludes the formal presentation. We're ready for any questions or comments the council may have. And again, just like with the CIP, we'll be back in front of you in two weeks for additional discussion and to adopt the operating budget for next fiscal year.
No speakers.
Thank you for all this work. This is, I know it's a tough process to put together a budget. Lot of work goes in behind the scenes. I wrote a few notes. I'll just look at whatever I highlighted and see if my questions were answered or not. And on page one, yes, they were. On the sales tax, where it says however sales tax revenue from county pool allocations, can you explain more what the ownership structure of a major retailer's fulfillment center? How does that impact us?
Okay, so it's a detailed technical question, but the way the sales tax dollars flow for an out-of-state retailer or an online retailer that has their centers located within the state of California versus outside of California. If they're located within the state of California, if it's owned by the retail entity itself, then those sales tax stay at the local point where that distribution center is. If it's owned by a third party, those monies go to the county pools. So there's a large retailer that historically, for whatever reason, it was a business decision made a long time ago, their centers were technically owned by a related third-party entity. So those sales tax dollars, we received 100% of those dollars. They go through the county pools, both for the in-state and out-of-state points. And the trigger here is where the goods located at the point that a sale is actually made. They have now dissolved that third-party intermediary or related entity. They now actually own their distribution centers throughout the state of California. So from the fourth quarter of 2021, excuse me, the fourth quarter of 2020 forward, any sales that are, where the merchandise is actually sitting in a distribution center in the state of California at the point that the sale is actually initiated, are going to go to the local jurisdiction in which the center is located. They're not going to go to the county pool in which the actual sale or the goods are being delivered. So the end result is the original estimate is that we could lose about 50%. About 50% of the dollars that would otherwise be going through the county pool may get redirected and get picked up by those local entities that have the distribution points. We're seeing one quarter worth of returns, and it looks like the impact's not going to be quite so severe. It's going to be closer to, we'll keep 63% or 63% will continue to go through the county pools, and 37% potentially will go to the sites where these are located. So kind of a long explanation, hopefully it makes sense.
You kind of hinted that this may happen. I don't know if you were Nostradamus or what, but I remember you saying something about, well, this could change.
We got wind of it a few months ago, I mean, a few months ago, and confirmed. And we're actually seeing, we actually saw the first quarter return where this impact is actually happening. Still waiting for the data. We have a consultant who pulls the tapes from the state and dives into all the details, but we've got the higher-level numbers, and so we have a better sense for what the impacts are going to be going forward.
So as a smart city, should we be focusing on a distribution center in Santee?
Purely from a sales tax standpoint, there's an advantage. You've got impacts, of course, other impacts, but clearly, yeah, there's going to be, there are winners.
I'll say yes.
Yes, I mean, it's obvious. There's winners and losers, and I don't remember the count. There's 17 or 24 of these locations. They're actually, you know, throughout the state. Some of them are much bigger than others, some of the ones on the major interstates, but in, you know, a little bit outside of the rural, the urban areas, but there are clear winners and clear losers here. Clear small group of winners with everybody else losing out just a little bit.
Wow, okay, thank you. Franchise fees, is there any opportunity in the franchise fee bucket? Are there any things up for negotiation, renegotiation?
Well, the challenge, so waste management, okay, the four entities involved are waste management, recently done. ATN T and Cox are both under state franchise agreements. So under state law, they have the ability to go that direction. So that 5% fee is capped, and that fee can be applied to a set by state law. So there's no opportunities there. The only thing left, and it's a hugely complex issue, I may have to defer to others in the room, would be SDGNE. So that's the only one left to tackle. We operate under a very old franchise agreement with SDGNE. Sean, I know your office has been involved in it and reviewing it to some extent. I don't know if you can add anything to this or not.
There's a provision in the current franchises, there's two, right, for electric and gas. And it's, I mean, they're designed to basically be evergreen, so they're not really subject to renegotiation, other than it does, there's language in the agreements that refer to, I think... Other than it does, there's language in the agreements that refer to, if there's a change from the city status of general law to charter, which of course we have done, that there can be a discussion. So we've talked about that before. We've never gotten direction to do anything with it, but there is at least, in theory on paper, an opportunity there. How real that is in terms of what you might get out of it is unclear to me, but there's a basis for opening up some discussions with SDGNE if the council were to so direct us to do.
Didn't the City of San Diego just do this?
That's right. Yep.
Yeah. So I think it's worth, in my opinion, pursuing. Community services, is the, it's a huge increase from the fiscal year. Is that related to just, like, how does that compare with the prior year or the prior non-COVID impacted year?
Tiny bit below the pre-pandemic level. A big piece of that jump is Sportsplex back at basically full operation. That's the single biggest piece there.
Got it. Federal grants, let's see, the American Rescue Plan Act. I think we are having a workshop later to go into more detail about what we could actually do.
Plan for July.
Calpers, we already talked about that. The ADA transition plan, I'm glad to see that in here, and I wrote another note about that. We may find through that report that we need additional CIP funds to cover some of the findings from that plan, so I think we should plan ahead for that. I don't know what that dollar amount looks like, but we definitely, you know, in our five-year planning need to include that. I wrote fantastic next to op-ed with an exclamation point. Vehicle Acquisition and Replacement Fund, are we contemplating any conversion to electric, an electric fleet plan or?
So a couple of things there. One is the infrastructure. Of course, we don't have the infrastructure currently to handle.
SDGNE.
So that's part of it. City Hall is the next location identified in the CIP for an EV charging station, so I think it's envisioned for the upcoming year, so that will help. The other is the mix of vehicles that are the oldest in the fleet, that are the next ones that were rolling out, weren't a good match for that.
Got it. Okay.
But that's another benefit to the enterprise program is they are, they do have a good network and connections with hybrid and EV vehicles. So we will definitely continue to work with them on those opportunities.
Okay. And then the landscape maintenance districts, and I highlighted assessment revenues have reached the maximum allowed in, like, one of seven of the 10 zones and one was all four zones. And I remember we did something unique where we had encountered this situation in a different community. Are we pursuing anything like that again, where we talk to the citizens in those areas? Or are we just, is the first step to, you know, take out the landscaping and try something else in those areas?
So the approach that was successful with the Zone 1 El Nopal area was we identified an interested resident property owner in the district who, you know, was interested in making something happen, worked through that, got that person engaged to work with their neighbors, to build some consensus, and hold the meetings and inform and educate the property owners. It's a really successful process. We tried this seven to eight years ago, citywide, with notification to every district where the zones were capped out, and nobody was interested. So, I mean, the point or the approach has been, we're not going to go to you and say, hey, we want to increase your taxes or assessments, but we may declare that this is what we can do if you're interested, and we're doing everything we can without drought-tolerant conversions, and, but there's only so much we can do, and these are our constraints. So we tried to educate people, and there was just not a lot of interest. So I know CSD has recently tried to do, identify somebody in one of our town center zones, thought we had some momentum, but apparently there wasn't an interest.
Well, one day it'll reach that point of diminishing returns, and I'm sure they'll pop up and want a solution, so. I just, overall, I know we have a budget workshop, Marlene and Tim and I, but thank you for offering that because this is, you know, there's a lot of detail here. And if you don't know, we get it like on a Friday night. I picked it up on my porch Saturday morning, and I went, oh, my goodness. So, you know, I didn't go through every single line item, but I definitely read, you know, a lot of it. And what I would ask for our workshop is that, basically, you take the, I want to compare 1920, 2021, and 21, 22 to 1819, because there's two fiscal years where at least portion of the years are impacted by COVID. And when I see, like, I saw a 3,000% increase in one line item, you know, and I have no point of reference for pre-pandemic, as you said, funds or expenses. So if you take those three CPIs, the CPIs for those three years, combine them together and compare it to 1819, and it's over that, an explanation why would be helpful to me so I can understand. And then, you know, I'll just talk about my budget values because I'm a nerd. Resource management, community services, public safety, fiscal responsibility, technology and innovation, and of course, employees. And what I saw, or what I didn't see in this budget is something for our cybersecurity needs. So I think that's something that's, you know, should be top of mind, and I see Jerry nodding his head, so I think he might agree with me. All right, thank you.
So I actually have some, if nobody else is ready to go. Sneaking into the, you just wait until I start talking, don't you? Go ahead, Rob.
I'll make this fast. So I thought when we were talking about the enterprise, the potential of the enterprise car program, that one of the big reasons for that was potential reduction in maintenance costs and needs, because now we've got a fleet of new vehicles that instead of having to have somebody constantly maintain and keep, just try to figure out a way to keep it going, it's, we switch it in for a new car. Is that not the case any longer, or what? If that is the case, then why are we looking at increasing more people in the maintenance side of a vehicle fleet?
I think I can handle that one. The enterprise doesn't change the maintenance needs. It changes some of the repair and replacement needs. So the cars will still need an oil change. There is a program through enterprise that you can pay for to include maintenance, but it still takes away, somebody has to take the vehicle there, drop it off or stay, and that seemed ineffective, inefficient, and would end up costing us more in time spent. So the vehicles will need maintenance, they just won't need as many repairs, hopefully, and the replacement is the big issue there, the turnover. So we're not in a position in 20 years where we have a whole bunch of 20-year-old vehicles that we need to replace all at one time.
No, I get that, and I'm fine with the program in and of itself. It's, if there's a lot of, I mean, are we looking at how much time is being spent on repairing vehicles versus just the basic maintenance of it? And when you have a newer vehicle, some, I mean, a lot of them, heck, the maintenance isn't even as much as it once was for oil change. It's not necessarily you're getting an oil change, you have to do it every 3,000 miles now. Now they're going, you know, 5,000, 10,000 miles between changes. So what's, looking at those types of things, has that been contemplated when?
It has. And one of the issues we're having now with, we have a .6 mechanic, and we've tried over the years many different options. One of them ended up being the part-time mechanic at .6. And we even went to an intern program a couple of years ago to try to get some help. That ended up taking more time away from our mechanics to do the training and upkeep. And even with the full-time mechanic in the .6, we are, I don't have the numbers offhand, way behind, let's just say, on normal vehicle maintenance, the oil changes and things of that nature. So this is, this will just get us up to a position to get all the services done and do all the repairs on the larger equipment like the fire engines, the ambulance fleet, the miles, and the repairs on those are mind-boggling. In addition, Public Works has quite a bit of heavy vehicles that take maintenance. So this .4 addition.
I thought Sam takes care of all that himself.
No? He could. This just gets us up to a point where we can maintain, and thankfully, with a newer fleet, some of the repairs of the general vehicles will be gone, hopefully. So this allow us, this .4 addition will allow us to get what we need to get done.
And now that I'm, we're talking it out, I'm not sure if it was a conversation that you and I just had, or if it was at council or what, but I do recall something about finding it difficult to have somebody to stay in that position at just a part-time when they could go work for a garage somewhere and get a full-time job.
Well, we have been lucky to find some diamonds in the rough that just their life situation allowed them to work part-time. But in the mechanic field, we're talking a lot of certificates and being trained in brakes and things of that nature. Not just anybody can, you know, go and do a brake job on our vehicles and then we put our people in them. You would have some liability issues there, so.
That's why we're not using Sam.
Find.
Got it.
So finding a part-time employee has been very challenging that has those certificates and has the ability and training to do those repairs. That is difficult at best. So it's become a kind of a circular revolving door of part-timers.
Fair enough. Thank you very much for the clarification on that. Appreciate it. The next thing, I just want to make sure, being cognizant of the fact that we know the increase, there's going to be an increase in law enforcement costs. You said they've been averaging between 4.5 and 6, so I just did the quick math between 4.5 and 6. It's 5.25%, 5.25% increase is about $840,000 a year, is, I mean, which is just about what we had for the last five years each year.
It's built into our longer-range planning, so I didn't include a slide with it, but we do. We look five years down the road and see, you know, with reasonable assumptions. Of course, we don't have a perfect crystal ball for four and five years down the road. Don't know what those contract costs are going to be. But, you know, at 5% to 5.5% annual increases, we're okay for the next five years.
Fair enough. Thank you. And then just to kind of piggyback a little bit on Councilmember Koval's point about pre-pandemic versus current times, I would just encourage that we also look at what the new norm is, because there's obviously some things that we've learned from this that will not go back to what they were before, and what does that mean for maybe, for sales tax revenue? What does that mean for property tax costs? What is that, you know, what are we looking at across the board and how we maybe as a city work with remote work? Who can do that? Who will be willing to do that? And we sublease out some space, who knows? I mean, just, but looking at all those different potentials, so not just pre-pandemic versus pandemic times, but being realistic about what the world does look like now and what that means to our overall budget. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. So Ron, did you have something?
Yeah. Mine's going to be really quick. The property taxes, Tim, where do you see those going? Do you see them, I'm seeing how people bidding $50,000, $60,000 over. Are you anticipating that to stop?
It can't continue indefinitely. I mean, personally, I would look at it for, it's good for another 12-month period, but I don't think it's going to last indefinitely. I mean, the exposure, I mean, that's going to, clearly, I mean, that rate of growth is not going to continue. But, I mean, the real exposure on property taxes is on the commercial industrial side. Fortunately, it's only about 20% of our assessed valuation base. Most of it's residential, so that helps protect us going forward. But that's, the commercial industrial is definitely where we, we've got a little bit more exposure.
Okay. And Chief, talk to me about the fire inspector.
The fire inspector is something that we've been working on for several years, and through many trials, we've tried to implement in the fire department to address our needs in the fire inspections. A few years ago, we implemented a program to pay our firefighters on their days off to go and do some of the inspections. As you know, we only have one fire marshal who is wrapped up in development mostly.
And the fire department for San McGill, that's what they do, is they wander over there right to the businesses and walk in and do the inspections.
San McGill?
Yeah.
We don't do inspections in San McGill.
No, 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 that's how they do it, is what.
Yeah, and that's how we do it as well. So we have two ways of doing it. Our engine companies do it on duty. They'll do a variety of inspections, which are limited, and they're kind of squeezed in between emergency calls and training, and which are ever-increasing. So a few years ago, excuse me, we tried this program to have firefighters do it off-duty. Obviously, there's issues with follow-up when people need re-inspections, and we, our businesses were not getting the service they needed. So then we tried a part-time, we were funded for a part-time, and due to the nature of the position, again, kind of like the mechanic, it takes a lot of certifications, and there's just not a large pool out there to, or really any pool out there that wants to do it part-time. Fire prevention in itself is an expanding field, so there's a lot of jobs. So people with just minimal certifications in the field are picking up full-time positions. So it's been very difficult at best. There's, I think, at present, about 100 pieces of legislation out there regarding wildland fires and fire inspections and things of that nature that we expect coming our way. So we need to be poised to address those. But our major issues are being business-friendly and getting out to our normal inspections, alleviating some of the stress off of our engine companies, and really tackling our industrial areas. Last year, we also increased, we addressed the fee schedule to charge some of the state-mandated inspections. So there is a larger component to cost recovery, which we're excited about. It's difficult to say exactly, to estimate exactly what that's going to look like, but we proposed a very cautious number of the offset. We expect in the next two years, that number will increase, and our recovery rate will be much higher. But honestly, we need to get an inspector and get out there and find out what we are missing, what's out there in our industrial areas, and get up to speed and service our community businesses.
Well, kind of like in my office, I think I had the fire department show up, and I guess it's been 10 years, I've been there 12 once. And, you know, I've gone through it enough with San McGill, so I knew exactly what to do and things like that. But I was just thinking, and I don't, you weren't charging at that time, are you charging for that now?
We charge for certain things. For a normal business inspection, we would not charge for, and you're, that's a great example, because over the last few years, we've been sort of forced to prioritize our inspections in an office like yours with limited people visiting, limited people in the building, and limited exposure. We prioritize those lower and get to our businesses that are welding and, you know, larger businesses that have high occupancy loads, that have a lot more potential for putting people in jeopardy. So unfortunately, we've kind of prioritized you two once every few years instead of every year like you should, we should be doing.
And again, that's what San McGill used to do, is every year they'd just show up and sign it off and be done with it. But they did charge me $49, and that's where I always bring up this rate about, to do that. So I knew every year I had to pay them $49 to sign off the, that. And I know, like, and again, this is years ago that I was over in the Spring Valley area, but like Jimmy's was $425. So if, we should look at, are we working at cost recovery for people like me that he has to walk in there, spend maybe five minutes, 10 minutes, but, you know, they'll end up talking for 15 minutes, so half an hour per business? Do we have a charge that we could charge that business, or is it?
I wish I had it in front of me. I apologize, I don't. We do have certain stipulations on some of the state mandates such as hotel motels. It's graduated depending on the number of units. So lower number of units would pay less.
I think we did do that a few years ago.
Some of those.
I'm just trying to justify paying for them. And, you know, basically, if you have one fire inspector, are they going to be, you know, I don't care if they're full-time, but it's still. but it's still maybe an hour per business, you know, that's still going to be a long, long time before they get back and forth. So that's one thing I just wanted to kind of keep in mind that we maybe want to increase that later on.
A realistic view is one fire inspector is, is going to be strapped to get all of our businesses and we have a significant sized industrial areas pockets throughout the, the city that have much higher risk, woodshops, you know, paint booths, things of that nature. So you're right, one, one inspector is going to be strapped to get it all done, but we really need a jump-off point to find out how much we can recover, how much cost recovery we could do and what's out there right now.
And then again, that's, I, I want this to be self-sufficient. That's why I keep bringing up cost and charging to, to walk into that business. And yeah, I mean, yelled at by a lot of the business community, but the reality is, is it's going to cost them a lot more if their place burns down. So the, you know, we need to really look at this on a, a long-term basis and maybe kind of evaluate it over the next few years and say, do we need two inspectors and do we need to charge for this? That's just my suggestions.
I have no doubt in the next few years with the, the state mandates in the legislation that require state mandated inspections, I think the latest one is A B, Councilmember McNallys probably knows, 38 that requires residences when they're sold in very high fire severity zones to be inspected by the jurisdiction and provide. Those are all time-consuming inspections, even though they're very basic, it will be something we will have to address. And, and I'm not exactly sure how much cost recovery that those are going to be afforded, if any, maybe a nominal fee to, to, to do it, but it's, it's, it's definitely something on the minds of most fire chiefs in this, in the county, how we're going to deal with the unfunded state mandates of inspections. And this is a, a good step in the right direction to make sure we're prepared. I don't, I think you're right, I don't think it's going to be enough in the next few years, but.
Okay.
It's a good start.
Mr. Trotter.
Yeah. All right. So my first time going through the budget here and I, like Laura, we all got it on Friday and I spent probably six hours on Sunday going through and highlighting all kinds of things and making notes and all kinds of stuff, but right off the bat, starting with staffing, we're looking at adding five and a half new personnel members here and what concerns me, not only the cost of the personnel, but obviously in perpetuity. So you know, year after year, you're having to pay, you know, for that position and obviously everything that goes along with it. So one of the items I highlighted tonight that Tim mentioned is the Calper recharges costs, $524,000 increase next year. You know, we can expect that again, I imagine, the, the year after that. And I'm just taking a guess here, you know, the way things go, it seems like every year.
Downgrade the.
Right. Exactly. You know, so we'll see how that pans out here. Get back to the staffing in a second, but it was already brought up about the law enforcement increase. Well, we don't know if there's going to be an increase, but at this point we can kind of assume it's been $800,000 every year for the last five years and 5%, like Vice Mayor McNallys said, is $800,000 again. So planning forward, Tim, those are some of the, my initial costs, you know, thoughts that, you know, we'll make sure that we, we are creating that, that five-year plan and we're looking forward because we're adding this additional cost to the bottom line. And when I look at the summary and add it up to all departments across the board, and I do understand there are some different costs in there, but it's about $2 million added to the overall budget, you know, wouldn't you add up all, every department overall in here? And there, and there's some individual cost breakdown in that, I'm not going to get onto that. And I know we did mention the Firefighters Association's MOU has one more year on that too, we'll have to renegotiate that contract too within another calendar year. So I just looking forward, more than looking at this year, I'm trying to look forward and, you know, make sure we're not getting over our skis and, and spending all of our money today, I guess, you know? Huh?
Over ours.
Yeah. Spending all our money today and not obviously, you know, thinking about what's best for the city, you know, going forward. As far as the, the staffing, you know, I just talked about the fire inspector and I, I understand the need for that. I wholeheartedly agree. I'm not sure if this is possible, as you guys were talking about the, the, the cost recovery there. I know every year we, we have a business license renewal within the business. Is there any way to add a fire inspection fee along with the business license renewal? Is that possible? So that can happen every year opposed to having to send them an invoice to wait to get paid? Is that even possible?
I can, I can kind of address that. We, this year, we actually have taken steps to further cost recovery. And the way we, it works now is we entered into a contract with Streamline where the engine company or in the future, our fire inspector would do an inspection and it's all iPad cloud-based. As soon as the, the business passed, the business owner would sign or the manager would sign, our engine company would sign and they hit send and it basically sends them a copy and sends an invoice directly to the billing company to, to bill. So we're, we're hopefully not going to miss any.
Okay. I, like I said, I was trying to think ahead, so can we, can we get the client, you know, the, the business owner, the building owner to pay upon renewable, renewal so that you already have it in the coffers, you're not waiting for, for payment, if that's possible? The HR additional person, I understand, it's hard, you, you need help. So we, we got to get you more help. So I support that one. The mechanic one, Rob kind of touched on that little bit and, you know, my understanding, we've been understaffed in that, that area for, for a while and it's really the, more the heavy equipment, the, the fire, fire apparatuses, the heavy equipment and stuff that they spend most of their time on, you know, making sure that it's maintenance and actually, my understanding, we're actually behind a little bit on, on some of the main, we're, we're keeping up on maintenance, but we're behind on some of the root, the routine, you know, repairs we're keeping up on, the maintenance we're behind on a little bit and on some of that. Is that true, Chief?
That's correct. We, we focus and prioritize the, the repairs to get the, the fleet back on, on this road and through our crews and PSD can get their job done. And then we, we also focus on safety inspections, but as far as the general maintenance, we're, we're unable to keep up at this time as far as the.
I noticed in the, in the funding, you know, some of that is actually coming from CSA 69 or other sources is how the, the mechanics are being paid for too.
Correct. We looked at, we looked at it again and we looked at our maintenance costs and we looked at where our mechanic and, and our part-time mechanic are spending their time. A significant amount is on fire apparatus just due to the nature of how, how we use them and how often they run, but the ambulances were a significant drain on resources and so we changed the allocation slightly to allocate a little bit more from the CSA funds because of the ambulance repairs to pay for the mechanic and the part-time mechanic or hopefully in the future, the full-time mechanic.
Yeah. Now, I appreciate you obviously trying to find out a way to make it all work because it's definitely a need and make sure that we obviously have the apparatuses to, for public safety, you know, to respond. And then the last one in that was Melian's department there, the field inspector for DDS, you know, you guys need more help on that front too. There's, there's no question. You know, but it's kind of what we've been talking about a little more of the building department side, not so much, you know, that side of the department is that we got to kind of look at how we're, how we're doing business, so, but we, I definitely recognize that you need some help over there, you know, in, in that department there. The other two were the frozen recreation coordinators. Bill, can you talk a little bit about that? Because I'm, that's one thing I'm honestly having a little bit of tough time with is reinstating a couple of people in, in CSD because, because of the other needs in the other areas, not to say that your department's not any, you know, important, but you know, fire is, in my mind is, has a little higher priority and so I'm kind of.
I can talk that, to that. Those are not new positions, they were positions that were vacant pre-COVID and we were looking to fill them and then when COVID hit, we, we froze them. Those are people that support teen programming, youth enrichment, the teen center, special events, and then I also note that we've added a park patrol and those people will be enforcing the disc golf payments, which have equaled to over $100,000 so far in this fiscal year. So we've, our staff has been really innovative during COVID to do some programs for seniors and teens to socially distance and stuff, but if we want to return to pre-pandemic levels of service, we need to fill these two boots-on-the-ground recreation coordinators.
Okay. Thank you. But I think, you know, kind of like Councilman Koval and Vice Mayor McNallys said, is we kind of look at, you know, where, where are we going? What's the next year look like? We just dealt with last year, we dealt with the last 14 months, the last 16 months with, with all this. Hopefully going forward, we're going to get back into, to real life, to whatever that looks like for everybody's individually different, but you know, where, where can we make some adjustments within our programming, you know, with the, with your department bill and, and, and some of the ways that we do things in general? So if that's, you know, worker from home, more like Councilman McNallys said, or if that's changing our operations of, of programming, just want to kind of think outside the box a little bit more, I guess, you know? Think about what this next year is going to look like for, for all of us and be, you know, fiscally responsible at the same time, you know, for, to the city. That's all I, I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. But you know, one advantage of going last is that everybody else pretty much said everything I was thinking. One thing that I want to do say is that I thought a lot about the staffing also and the fact that most of the staff for the last 16 months especially has been doing more with less staffing. Eric, I know you, you guys have been just knocking it out of the park down there. You know, even though we're behind on maintenance, we still have fire trucks, ambulances, they're all still rolling out there and they're taking care of business. And, you know, Sean, your, your office has been working hard too, even though everybody's been working from home and maybe we're not doing some of the same things we weren't doing, but I just want to make it clear that I appreciate all the work that's being done, operations, you name it. You, you just have, have to get it done and, and this, this staff, whether it's the department head sitting around here or some of the workers that are sitting out in the audience, they take such pride in this city that they get the job done. So I just want to let you know, I appreciate it so much. Having said that, why does a fire inspector need a police interceptor?
It's not as fancy as it sounds. It's kind of their.
I know, I drove one.
Well, yours was even probably had all the stuff. This is a, a scaled-down version, the non, non-XLT, if you will, base model Explorer, I guess it is.
Yeah. No, I, I just, because of the name, I just had to say that. But the, the other thing too is the, one thing that's become very near and dear to me lately has been the Santee TV. And last time, we talked about increasing the budget and quite frankly, as we've gotten into this, we found out we even needed more equipment than originally thought. And the more we do, we're going to find that we do need more. One of the things I had thought about is that maybe what we should have done before really jumping off into all this is actually hired a consultant to look at where we're going to film, what we're going to use and things like that. So that might be something we think about in the budgeting in the future because, I don't know, I, I enjoy, I've looked at it a little bit. I think there are definitely some things we can do to, to enhance it, sound quality and things of that nature, but those, those are just more pieces of equipment that we didn't know about because we didn't talk to maybe the right people ahead of time. So just a thought on that. And not saying that what we've done so far hasn't been nice though, because I've, I've been kind of having fun and after tonight, I'll probably watch this council meeting and chuckle again.
I don't watch much. You watch that?
He likes watching himself.
Nah, actually what I do is I look at what's going on between meetings and stuff, see what we're filling content with.
I agree.
Yeah, I feel like, I feel like one of the producers, you know, or executive producer, whatever you want to call it, I don't know. So, but I think I, and I've jumped into this with Marlene and Bree and Riley and stuff and, and quite frankly, I feel a little bit of an obligation to help out. So I think that's about all I have. My notes are all running out here. So anyhow, thank you very much and we're going to do this again on the 23rd, any kind of, you know, title, tidying up everything, so thank you very much. So now I got to get back to the agenda. Okay. That takes us to item number 11, which is a resolution to adopt a list of projects funded by Senate Bill 1. Heard a little bit about Senate Bill 1 during the last conversation. The Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017 for fiscal year 21, 22. Carl.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers again. As you guys heard in the previous presentation on the budget, one of the things that we're required to do, and this is routine, is a resolution of the City Council to adopt the list of funded projects, so Senate Bill and the Road Maintenance and Repair Accountability Act, or more specifically, the RMRA funds. In order to receive these funds, local agencies must submit to the California Transportation Commission a list of projects funded with those RMRA funds and we must submit a resolution adopting those projects. The projects we're recommending were already mentioned, they include bridge restoration citywide, concrete repair and replacement program, pavement repair and rehabilitation, and the pavement made roadway maintenance program citywide. These are all consistent with the adopted or the proposed budget and the capital improvement proposed budget and projects. Staff is recommending City Council adopt the resolution approving the list of funded projects and reporting, allowing staff to report the requirements. And that concludes, I'm available for any questions.
Speaker slips?
No speakers.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
I have a motion by McNallys and second by Trotter. Any other comments or anything? All right, please vote.
It's a very compelling argument. Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
You're getting better at it, Carl. That takes us to item number 12, a resolution authorizing the Eighth Amendment to the agreement with West Coast Arborist Incorporated for Urban Forestry Services, Community Services. Bill, are you going to handle that or?
I'm going to hand this one off to Stan Rensberry, our Public Services Manager.
Saw him starting to get up, so I figured it's going to be a stand-in. Welcome again, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I hope you have a good evening. Tonight before you is a resolution authorizing the Eighth Amendment to the agreement with West Coast Arborists for Urban Forestry Services. We're asking, we had a $19,000 savings from the Willow Grove Fire Break, so we'd like to respectfully ask you guys to redirect that for the removal and replacement of dead and dying and poorly structured trees throughout town. Some of the trees were lost as part of a grant that we, we'd like to replace. The rest of the trees have been identified by our tree trimming contractor during routine grid trims, they'll, they'll notify us of any dead or trees that are, have issues that, that we need to look at. So we're respectfully asking council to redirect the $19,000 in savings and increase the fiscal year 2021 contract by $12,000 for a total of $31,820. So respectfully ask staff recommendation to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Eighth Amendment to the contract with West Coast Arborists and I'm available for.
Motion to approve and as, because you said respectfully.
I have a motion by Ron Hall, second by Laura Koval. Any speaker slips on this?
No speakers.
Thank you. Please vote.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Motion carries unanimously.
That takes us to the next section, non-agenda public comment.
We have no speakers, sir.
And no speakers. That takes me a minute then to get back to my agenda.
Almost.
Almost, yeah. Almost. Okay. I do have notes on my screen over here. So that takes us to City Council reports. And I'm going to ignore my left for just a moment. I should ignore my right too.
I was just going to say, I got you on the right too.
Why we set this up like this, I'll never. Why we set this up like this, I'll never know. So Laura, do you have anything?
I have a binder. No, I don't.
Ron? No, okay. Dustin?
Yeah, actually, I just want to quickly thank the four of you guys, my colleagues up here for the previous Monday. We raised a heck of a lot of money at the Veterans Hall here in Santee.
For the Veterans Hall.
Yeah, for the Veterans Hall here in Santee. You guys, we raised over $5,800 in just tips that day and over $2,000 in the till that day. So, all that money stays right here in the hall and to obviously keep their doors open, lights on and all that good stuff. So that's it. Thank you, guys.
Great way to support our veterans.
Amen.
Rob?
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I don't have anything either. The manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of things real quickly. We want to send a quick congratulations to our new graduates. Santana High School and West Hills High School did have their graduation ceremony, so we've got some new adults that are out there on the roads and enjoying themselves as high school graduates. So beware, community, because they're probably having a good time this weekend. Also, Father's Day is coming up, so thank you and happy Father's Day to all those dads. I have some more serious business to announce to the community, however, and that is that we did receive some information today regarding some road closures at the interchange of I-8 and Highway 67. We do have this posted up on the city's website. I believe that our public safety agencies are aware of this and this comes forward that tonight and tomorrow, as well as next Monday through Thursday, the interchange at 67 and I-8 will be closed from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM with a variety of detours. So if you're planning on going that way after the council meeting, you might want to get out of here right now so that you can get there. On the other hand, Friday, June 11th, from 9:00 PM through Monday, June 14th at 5:00 AM, the closures are even more dramatic. So I would encourage the community, council members, to take a look at the city website and our social media sites to get the information about these detours. They're doing some bridge restoration work. I hope I have that right from Mr. Johnson here and Mr. Schmidt. And so we just want to make sure the community is aware of those closures and have a safe weekend, everybody.
Great, thank you. Rob?
Yeah, I was, I neglected to make mention of the fact that it's, you know, it's starting to get back to normal when you have the Batistas in the audience again. It's great to see you guys here. We missed you.
City attorney?
No report, Mayor.
Great. City clerk, anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Then that takes us to closed session. Item number 13. Yeah, 13 through 16. We have conference with legal counsel on item number 13, conference with rural property negotiators on 14, property negotiators on 15, and conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation on 16. All right, let's recess to the back room.
Do we want to come back on in session or?
We're on.
Okay, all right, that takes us out a closed session. Item number thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen was a discussion with staff, no direction given. Item number sixteen, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, direction given. It was unanimous vote that we would accept the settlement agreement. Does that work, Sean?
Yes, Mayor, perfect.
All right then. Only last thing that I have before I hit the adjourned button is that I suggest that counsel go to casual business attire for the summer session. And I would also recommend that staff be allowed to attend council meetings in casual business attire also.
Mr. Mayor, I think it'd be Padre Wednesdays every other Wednesday?
We could do that too. Yeah. Yeah, but what we want to do is just make sure that everybody's comfortable during the hot weather months. And we don't have that many meetings during the summer anyway, so. Everybody in agreement on that? All right, start next meeting then. All right then, that takes us to the adjournment. Thank you.